Good evening and welcome to the November 17, 2011, meeting of the City of West Sacramento Planning Commission. We will start our meeting this evening with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'm going to ask Commissioner Sandin to lead us in that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. As a reminder, there are slips over on the side table over there with request-to-speak forms. If you wish to speak on an item, please fill that out, whether it is on the agenda or not. First item on our agenda is presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda, but within the jurisdiction of the commission. At this time, I have no request to speak on items that are not on the agenda, so we'll move on to correspondence by staff.
Yes, thank you, Chair Leibig. Few matters to note for the commission's behalf. First, regarding the city council, back on November 2, the city council heard a presentation from staff regarding the updated wireless policy that your commission had considered at a prior meeting, and they provided us some specific direction about certain elements of it, particularly on the concept of steffing, in terms of having steffing be more context-sensitive. And also, we have some design considerations in there for various facilities that are roof-mounted or facade-mounted, et cetera, and they want to make sure it was clear in the policy that those type, the design considerations for those kinds of facilities are also very important in the urban areas of our community. You know, we've been focusing a lot about some of the other projects in some of our more suburban parts of our community, but so we'll be beefing up some of those provisions returning to council potentially next month or more maybe in January. One of the things the council did want us to ask if the commission was interested in seeing the wireless policy again, prior to going back to council, we would be bringing you essentially the same policy that we brought to you the last time that your commission already acted upon, and council did not approve any use of any consultant resources or any other additional budget allocation for this task, so we would continue to pursue this through the city council unless there was a desire of the commission to have the matter come back, but it would be substantially what you have seen previously. And of the two major matters that the commission asked for input on the council regarding to setbacks in height, council did not have any direct or specific input on those particular provisions of the policy. So it would be up to the commission's discretion as whether they would like to see that again before it goes back to council, but it would be a lot of information that you've already considered and deliberated on and voted on previously. Also, this last council meeting, the council did first reading on the River Road Venture Development Agreement, which your commission wrote to recommend approval on back in October, so second reading of that will be next month at council. We also have a memo for myself regarding two letters of correspondence we received today regarding the Vista Towers project, which is item number five. And speaking of the Vista Towers item number five, staff did receive an email communication from the applicant on that project shortly before the meeting started, actually requesting continuance of that item, so that could be heard by the full commission, so staff would not object to that continuance, and we would ask that the commission continue that item to a date certain, and that date being December 15. So with that, that does conclude staff's correspondence this evening.
Thank you, David. David, do we need to vote on the continuance?
Yes.
We do. So at this time, I think it would be wise if we changed the order of agenda and moved number five up on the agenda and handle that now.
Mr. Chairman, with that, I'd make a motion that we continue item number five to December 15.
Yes, that's correct.
I'll second that. Moved by Commissioner Moore, seconded by Commissioner Sandin. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any ayes? Hearing none? Continue to date of December 15, 2011.
Yes, thank you.
David, I had one other comment or question on your report. So the wireless policy as recommended by the commission at our last meeting went before council, and there was no input on the outstanding items, and so now it can come back to us or go back to council, but if they have no input on the two outstanding items for recommendations, how is that dealt with?
Well, the, we do have provisions in the updates to wireless policy that do address those two topics, and we know there was not 100% consensus on the planning commission about how to treat those matters, but the council did not give us any direction to change those provisions. This is in terms of what is allowed, how we handle height and how we handle setbacks when in proximity to residential. So we're, they did not tell us to change anything in the policy regarding those two matters, so we're presuming that those provisions that are in there, that the commission did vote to approve, albeit not unanimously, are sufficient for the council. We did not get any direct input on those particular topics, but they did not direct us to return to the council, excuse me, to the planning commission on that particular topic, but they certainly wanted us to at least inquire with the commission if the commission wanted to take this particular matter up again.
But the recommended, or the suggestions that were attached to the recommendation, those would still be considered by council, correct?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, so we would be bringing back, again, substantially what you saw before, and we're not recommending that we bring it back, but the council asked us to ask, and so thus, you're asking the commission if you want to see it one more time.
Okay, thank you. That answers my question. Doesn't answer? Okay. Moving on to disclosure of ex parte communication. At this time, commissioners need to disclose communications that we've had with applicants. Mr. Chase?
Yeah, I had a telephone conversation with the applicant on item five, Vista Towers, and received an email of the reductions of the revised plans, probably a month or so back.
Mr. Chairman, I had a discussion with the architect for item number four.
Mr. Chairman, I had a discussion also with the applicant on item number five.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda. I don't know if it needs to be pulled out or if we can just move on it. I'll entertain a motion.
I move approval of the minutes.
Moved by Commissioner Chase, seconded by Commissioner Moore. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? And I believe there are two abstentions, the one is myself and the other is Commissioner Sandin.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the regular agenda. This is, goes in the order that it is since we took the last one out. Public hearing on revocation of the California College Career and Technical Education Conditional Use Permit, Ms. White.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the planning commission. On July 15, 2010, the planning commission approved a conditional use permit for the CCC Tech Charter School at 890 and Barker Darrow Drive. The school opened in September 2010, and in early September of this year, staff was informed that the school had closed its doors, and on September 19, the property owner informed city staff that the charter school had vacated the premises and that the property was being marketed for sale or leased. The zoning ordinance states that the planning commission may revoke a conditional use permit if the peremptee fails to comply with the conditions of approval, and the basis for revoking the use permit is based on the applicant's failure to comply with conditions one and conditions two, and copy of the conditions of approval are attached in the staff report. Condition number one essentially states that the property would be operated as a technical charter school. The school is not in compliance with this condition since the premises are no longer being occupied by that entity, and in addition, the property is being marketed as a high-tech manufacturing, lab manufacturing, I'm sorry, assembly building rather than a charter school. Condition number six requires the charter school to comply with the requirements of all other agencies of jurisdiction. This charter school received its charter approval from the state, and so it is subject to the requirements of the education code. The school was noticed for violating certain education codes, and they were not resolved to the satisfaction of the state. The charter school voluntarily closed its doors and surrendered their charter. So with that said, staff is recommending the planning commission conduct a public hearing, find that the use is not in compliance with the conditions of approval, and revoke the use permit.
Thank you. Are there any questions before I open the public hearing? Okay, at this time, I will open the public hearing, however, I don't have any request to speak at this time on the revocation of the conditional permit for the school. So I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for deliberation. Are there any comments?
It seems very clear to me, so I'll go ahead and move the recommended action.
Moved by Commissioner Sandin. Seconded by, sorry, Joe, Mr. Galvong. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Passed unanimously. Okay, moving on to item number three, which is the public hearing regarding Sacramento Valley Charter School Conditional Use Permit.
The Sikh temple is requesting a conditional use permit to operate a charter school for grades K through eight at 2399 Evergreen Avenue. The site is currently developed with a 6,000-square-foot building that would be converted for this purpose. The school will offer instruction in Punjabi language and culture in addition to the standard curriculum and operate from 8:30 a.m. to 3:05 p.m. Monday through Friday. The first phase of the school will include grades K through six and later expanded to include grade seven through eight, and it build out the school is anticipated to accommodate 175 students and expected to draw students from the West Sacramento, Sacramento, and Acroft communities. Ten full-time staff and three part-time staff will also be employed by the school. There are two items discussed in the staff report that I would just like to briefly focus on. The first item is related to location. Light industrial uses are located north and west of the project site. The parking lot for the Sikh temple is located east of the project site, and the Sikh temple is located north of the project site, and since the charter school would be located across the street from the Sikh temple, it would be a logical extension of the facility. The second issue is related to air quality. Since the property backs up to Highway 50, it is highly likely that diesel particulate emissions are present in the vicinity of the site due to traffic-related emissions. Diesel particulate matter found in diesel exhaust is classified by the California Air Resources Board as a toxic air contaminant, and heavy-duty diesel trucks traveling along the freeways are a major source of this pollutant. And in its 2005 Air Quality Land Use Handbook, the Air Resources Board recommends, not requires, but recommends citing new sensitive land uses such as schools at least 500 feet or more from a freeway to reduce potential exposure by up to 70%. In discussions with the Yolo Solano Air Quality Management District, there are basically not very many mitigation measures that could be implemented to reduce outdoor exposure. Other than locating the school 500 feet or more from the freeway, the site cannot be modified to reduce the school's exposure to the toxic air contaminants. Because of the school's proximity to the freeway, the air district could not recommend a maximum outdoor recreation time where there would be no health impacts. To reduce this impact to less than significant, the air district is recommending that outdoor recreation activities be prohibited to ensure that there are no significant risks to children. Staff realizes that there are health benefits for having children to play outside, however, no recess policies are not uncommon or unheard of. As far as indoor air quality is concerned, the air district recommends that the applicant install specialized air filtration systems. As a condition of approval, staff is also recommending that the school provide notification to parents or guardians regarding this potential health risk. Staff is recommending that the planning commission conduct a public hearing, certify that the planning commission has determined that the mitigated negative declaration is the appropriate level of environmental review in the SEQA, and finds that the mitigated negative declaration represents the independent judgment of the city. Reproach the requested conditional use permit, subject to the findings and conditions as identified in the staff report, and approve the mitigation monitoring plan. Available, any questions?
Thank you, Sandra. Are there any questions of Sandra before we open the public hearing?
Yeah, Sandra, two questions that I had. One was with regard to the air quality district recommending no outdoor recess or play area. Is there anything educationally in the certification of a charter school that requires outdoor play area?
That I don't know. I don't know the charter, I have no knowledge as to whether or not an outdoor recreation time is required as part of their charter.
That might be, I know daycare it is, but I don't know about a charter school. And the other one, really, it's just from looking at the site plan, seller's way apparently dead ends at that property. Is there adequate turning radius for fire trucks in this area? I know they've got parking lots and adjacent property to turn into, but...
The fire department did not comment on that, so I would, I'm not sure how to answer that question, other than they did not comment, they did not comment one way or the other. But when building permits are submitted, they would have to submit building permits, that would be an issue that would be verified.
This did go to fire department for review or comment?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay? Oh, you have a question?
Senator, I guess my question revolves around the air quality issue, and you know, the high school shut down and then the grammar school opened?
The high school?
Yeah. Remember the high school? We had a high school here in town. They shut it down.
Okay.
And they moved it out to Southport.
Okay, okay.
That shut down, and then another school moved in there. Were these issues brought up to that attention to the school board that they can't have a school next to a freeway?
I don't, which high school, which high school are you talking about?
River City High School.
Yeah, the old River City High School that came now, it's an elementary school now, I believe, yeah.
Right. I mean, are these issues that you would write, wouldn't you bring these up to the school district?
Well...
Or shouldn't the school district be aware that they're not supposed to do this?
What I don't know, I don't know if charter schools, as far as the education codes, I'm not familiar with the sliding requirements for charter schools in this situations.
But then too, I guess my question is secondary. If they don't use the football field, everything's probably over 500 feet away from the freeway, realistically. And if that's true, I mean, if this school was 600 feet away, would we deal with this issue at all?
If the school was located 600 feet away, it would be consistent with the sliding recommendations of the Air Resources Board. They recommend at least 500 feet.
So if their playground was 600 feet away, then it's not an issue.
It would be fine.
But since it's next to the freeway, it is. Okay, thank you.
Okay, if there are no more questions for staff, I will open up the public hearing, and I do have a request to speak from Dr. Dollywall. And if you could, please state your name. For one, I would like to make sure I pronounce it correctly.
My name is Narinder Singh Dollywall. By profession, I'm MD, and I'm the board chairman for this Sacramento Valley Charter School. My engineer arm is not here for some reason, and I would have liked them to speak. My only concern is that appreciate their quality concern, and we are very much aware of that, that, you know, that's not healthy for the kids. And our plan is to move the playing area at least 500 feet away from the freeway, because we have, our property is, you know, it's deep enough. It could provide us the play area in that section, and we can make sure that we close that area at the time of the school operation, because the school is basically Monday through Friday, and the temple operates seven days a week, but give or take, the majority of the attendance is usually on the weekend and not Saturday, Sunday. Really, the afternoon services are Wednesday or something, so that does not interfere with the traffic or the parking issue. From our side, the main concern is, you know, how expensive is the mitigation monitoring issue, and how we can, how it's going to affect, because it seems like charter hasn't given money by the city or the state or the district, but it's having, operating the school for about three months, the money is very, very tight, so any more sort of a burden will not be practically feasible for us. So just have a concern on this process, because it seems like doable the way, you know, described, but I just want to make sure it's affordable to us, and thank you.
Thank you. Before you go anywhere, are you representing the applicant directly?
No, I'm representing the school.
You are, okay.
The applicant staff is from the temple, is here too.
Okay.
I've attended at the temple for many years, but the president is here from the temple.
He's president of the school.
Right. I'm going to forego the time clock, Cindy, just so you know that one, because he is representing the school. And are there any questions of Dr. Dollywall?
Actually, I, I just want to see if I understand. You're asking us to go ahead and do the monitoring plan, but you're afraid it'll be too expensive?
I just clarifying, because I don't know the impact of this, you know, that's why I said I wish my other...
I think he walked in.
Oh, I'm sorry. He's right here, so he can take over.
I think, will he specifically tell us what part of the plan you're concerned about then?
Yeah, he's our point person for all the concerns which you have in regard to the plan, you know. I think he got caught into the traffic, so if you allow, please. He's the architect and the engineer for the plan, you know, designing the plans.
Should I ask him questions?
I'm going to have other voices.
Okay. Okay, I'm going to leave the public hearing open in case we do have questions, but at this time, thank you.
They wanted the other gentleman to talk.
Oh, they do, okay.
The engineering, he's a, by all the record, he's an architect and engineer of the design.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Could you please just state your name before speaking?
My name is Thirith Pal Sandhu. I'm a professional engineer, and I represent the Sikh temple and the Sacramento Valley Charter School in all engineering matters related to buildings and other uses in front of the city and other organizations.
Okay. Well, I guess we got a bit of an introduction from the school.
I guess my question could go to him then.
Okay.
They were talking about the monitoring plan, and they were afraid it might be too expensive to do. Is there one party in particular that you're concerned about, or is it just the overall monitoring plan in general? Or do you know?
I think most of the conditions we can meet, like in terms of transportation study, there is a couple of things. One is a pathway from the main building to the parking lot, and another one is the student drop area and pickup area. So that's not, and transportation study concluded that there is no impact on the other area and the city transportation system. So that's no problem for us. In terms of fence, there's a condition that fence should be not more than three feet higher, so that we can change. Only problem comes when it comes to air resources, you know, the air quality report. There are a couple of things. One is to upgrade the heating and air conditioning system where we should have, you know, diesel contaminants being filtered, and that's practically possible, like mechanically we can do it. Only problem is with the play area, that it's within 400 feet of the highway, and so open recreation will not be allowed. So that means we have to circulate that also to all the parents, prepare a plan, get approval from the city, and then circulate to all the students and their parents that this is the case, why we cannot allow, you know, open recreation area. Or there are, in terms of, if city is, you know, willing to cooperate on this, we can, we do have other properties which are, you know, the distant voice, more than, greater than 400 feet from the highway. So that means the recreational part, it's possible that we can create a playground in one of our other properties around the Sikh temple. Now, when you say monitoring air quality, I think Air Resources Board, they do that, and personally, I'm not sure whether they will be charging anything to us, because within 400 feet of the highway, it's anywhere all over the city, you know, they do monitoring from time to time.
Any questions of the applicant? I have one question, just for clarification. Dr. Dollywall said something that I wasn't quite clear on. Is the school already open, and has it been open for three months? Or is it that the school has received its charter for three months and it is not open?
School is already open. We do have a use permit in the main Sikh temple building. We do have a certain area which is on the second floor and accessible only to students. Normally, the community doesn't make use of that area, and that use was approved by city, you know, within our, previously, we did have Sunday school also, and so school is actually functioning at this time.
I think I actually remember that one. I didn't, I didn't know it was a different building we were talking about. That's what, that's the clarification I wanted. Thank you. Okay, if there are no other questions of the applicant, I'll close the public hearing. So thank you. And at this point, we'll, we bring it back to the commission, and we'll deliberate and talk to the city directly, so thank you. Okay, Ms. Sandin?
I have a question for staff or council. Because we're dealing with this parcel, the concept of something off-site, how does that come into play with our deliberations tonight? I'm just trying to understand if this is really ready for us, or if there's, if we should be looking into continuance so some of this can get sorted out. It just seems like it's, when I think about our action, it's, my understanding it's for this parcel, and that's what we're taking action on. So if there's some kind of negotiation with other places or, sorry, I'm just trying to understand, so I'll shut up and let you explain it.
No, you are correct that the conditional use permit is only applicable to this parcel, so that is correct.
To the extent we're talking about their existing facility out there where they were previously approved to have a school within the main temple, which they have been operating... previously approved to have a school within the main temple, which they have been operating, um, you know, that, that is permissible since that's already been approved. But if we're talking about a, another site beyond that, then that has not been considered in any, any of this approval or the prior approval. So it really wouldn't matter as to what, what, if, if there is an offsite concept, you know, which offsite are we really referring to?
And that, but that wouldn't really pertain, so I'm just, again, trying to get my head around this, that doesn't necessarily pertain to our discussion.
Well, there are no offsites have been considered within this particular project, but I did want to point out that the school was previously, the Sikh temple was previously approved to have a school within the main Sikh temp- Sikh temple campus. And now this is a, another building that is adjacent to their main facility.
Okay, okay. But our discussion should be about this parcel. Okay, and the use of the parcel.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Jennifer?
I guess to Sandra, did, do we have, do we have any idea on the monitoring plan, what part that they're very concerned about that may cost them money?
Well, I'm looking at the mitigation monitoring plan for this project, and it's the very last page of your staff report.
Right.
There are only two. In addition to the conditions, there are also mitigation monitoring plans. And one of the monitoring mitigation measure deals with, um, noise. And the other mitigation, um, measure deals with the air quality. And so as far as the air quality issue is concerned, we're just asking that, one, no outdoor recreational activities occur on the site. And number two, that they use, uh, some specialized air filters. And this is a, a, a condition, if you may recall, that was, uh, required for the Bounce, um, Indoor Recreation and Childcare Center that was located Promenade. And also, the same condition was required for the CC Sikh Tech Charter School. They were not having any outdoor activities, but we did require them to install some specialized air, uh, air filters, so...
But really, the only thing we're talking about is the air filter.
Yeah, and that's, that's a one-time installation with maintenance, you know, with ongoing maintenance.
It's not, yeah.
Right. Okay.
So, so how far away is the, the current school from the new proposed school?
The, right across the street.
Right across the street. So we're just talking about moving across the street. And i- is it an actual air filtration system or are we just talking about air filters?
It's, it's, it's just, yeah, specialized air filters that can...
Instead of normal air filters that I would put, I put something in there that maybe... It's not a system. I see it says air filtration system, but we're just talking about that.
It, it, it goes a little further to say that it, they, the air filters have to filter particles less than one microgram in diameter.
We're not talking about ripping the building apart and putting a new system in.
No, no.
We're talking about, when I think of an air filter, I think of the filters I put in at home.
You, you, yeah.
All right, okay.
My point on that one is, uh, even if it's an additional cost, this is a student, uh, place where we, we will be housing students and it is adjacent to a, a freeway. So, in my opinion, the air filtration system needs to stay, even if it is, uh, an expensive, uh, cost. If it is too expensive to have a school there, then we need to find another spot. That's, that's just my opinion. So I'm not willing to, uh, pull that one out. Those are all of the comments, however. I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, staff's recommendation.
Moved by Commissioner Galván.
As is with the filtration system.
I'll second the motion.
Seconded by Mr. Moore. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none. Passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Moving on to number four.
I would like to read the appeal procedure, uh, real quickly. Um, any interested party may appeal decision of the planning commission in this matter to the city council by filing a written appeal with the city clerk within fifteen days to tonight's action, and that appeal must be accompanied by the appropriate filing fee.
Thank you, David. Number four is the public hearing regarding the Indian Heritage Indoor Recreation Center Conditional Use Permit, number eleven dash four. And, uh, this will be, um, the staff, staff report will be given by Ms. White.
The applicant is seeking approval of a conditional use permit to operate an indoor recreation center for youth between the ages of eight and seventeen years old. The project involves two parcels. The location of the center, the actual center itself, is proposed to be located at three thousand West Capitol Avenue. And that site is developed with, uh, an eight thousand five hundred eighty-seven square foot building. The center will provide employment for ten people. The days and operations, uh, are Monday through Friday between three to six P.M. and Saturdays and Sundays between nine o'clock and five P.M. On weekdays, the center is expected to accommodate anywhere from twenty-five to thirty people, including staff, and approximately sixty-five to seventy people on the weekend, including staff as well. And as I had mentioned in staff report, uh, the building was tagged for illegal construction, which included a one thousand two hundred and thirty-two square foot addition. The second parcel, which is located at seven twenty-five Houston Street, will be used to provide most of the parking for the center. A six-foot-tall masonry wall is proposed to be located along the northerly, uh, property line of the parking lot. And an eight-foot-tall masonry wall is also proposed to be located where the new parking lot abuts the Wild West feed and supply to the south. There are a couple of things that I would like to mention on this project. Uh, this project is located in an area that includes a mix of industrial, commercial, and public, quasi-public uses. A compressed gas storage and distribution facility is located on the, uh, north of the, the new parking lot. Uh, Country West Shopping Center is located south. An assembly hall is located to the east. And the pet supply store and torn yard are located, uh, west of the project site. There are businesses located within five hundred feet of this site that either use or store hazardous materials. Uh, the proposed parking lot will provide a buffer, um, uh, between the, uh, in, the indoor recreation center and from the industrial uses located north and west. And in addition, as I had mentioned, the applicant is proposing to construct a six-foot-tall masonry wall where the parking lot would abut the gas storage and distribution facility to the north. The only comment we see from the fire department was that they are, uh, requiring, requesting that the wall between the parking lot and the industrial use to the north be a two-hour firewall. And staff has confirmed with the building division that, um, the applicant's proposal to, you know, provide a, a masonry wall would meet this requirement. As I had mentioned earlier, the center will only operate between three and six P.M. during the week and nine to five P.M., uh, on the weekends. And so, since the center will only be o- open during the last few hours of a standard workday and on the weekends, the potential conflicts between the proposed project and the existing businesses in the area would be minimized. And, uh, in addition, staff has not received any phone calls from the surrounding, uh, property owners regarding the proposed conditional use permit. Lastly, the set, the Houston Street parcel, which will provide most of the parking, will also include, uh, trash recycling enclosure. And since this is a separate parcel, a condition of approval requires that the applicant either merge the parcels or place a, or record a deed restriction, uh, that will prevent the sale of property until adequate replacement is, is provided for parking and for the trash enclosure. And in addition, the landscape development guidelines, uh, require an eight-foot-tall privacy wall and fifteen-foot-wide landscape buffer between the two parcels, since they are zoned differently. But since they are being, uh, developed as one, uh, project, these improvements will not be required. However, in the event that the Houston parcel is sold, the deed restriction will prevent the sale of parcel until these improvements are provided. With that said, staff is recommending that planning commission conduct a public hearing, certify that the planning commission has determined that the mitigated negative declaration is the appropriate level of review under CEQA, and finds that the neg- negative, uh, negative declaration represents the independent judgment of the city. Approve the requested conditional use permit, subject to the findings and conditions as identified in the staff report, and approve the mitigation monitoring plan. And the applicant is present in the audience, um, regarding this project.
Thank you, Sandra. I think that was very, very helpful to hear. Is the applicant prepared to speak?
Yes.
Does he or she wish? I haven't, not, not just yet. I just wanted to make sure that, um, I knew whether or not you had planned to speak. Um, does the commission have any questions of staff before we open the public hearing? No? Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Chair.
If I could ask, um, Sandra, um, was there anything in the, uh, air quality? I didn't see anything in terms of mitigation that would require something similar to the last, uh, project where this is certainly all an inside, uh...
Exactly.
Was there any filtration or any kind of special...
No, no, because this is not considered a sensitive land use.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, at that time, or at this time, I will open the public hearing. And since the applicant is present to speak, I invite you up. If you can please just state your name before we speak.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'm Michael Brady. I'm, uh, with CSHQA Architects here in town. I'm representing, uh, Mr. Manhar Patel, owner of the land. And, uh, his timing is impeccable, isn't it? Um, Mr. Patel will, um, um, address, uh, his goals and ideas for the, for the project here in a moment. Um, the, um, um, staff report is very thorough and, and, um, lays out, uh, the conditions, existing conditions and proposed conditions of the, uh, of the project. Uh, so I, I can address those if you have any, any specific questions related to, um, the content of the, um, of the operation, proposed operation, um, as far as spaces and relationships and that kind of thing. Uh, we, um, the project will provide a facility for the city's youth development. And, um, it, it also will upgrade another property along West Capitol Avenue, uh, which, uh, is working to the west there and, and, uh, I think will certainly add value, uh, to the, um, city's landscape corridor, uh, the overall corridor feel. Uh, is consistent, uh, with the redevelopment trends and will improve the character and environment of the neighborhood. The conditions as stated, um, by staff in, in the staff report are acceptable. And, um, I call your attention to, um, item or the attachment number three in your report. Uh, that is, uh, Mr. Patel's, um, narrative on the project. Uh, and, um, would, uh, I think you'd like to, uh, possibly address that now. Mr. Patel? Would you like to speak? About your goals?
Thank you, folks, for giving us opportunity to speak a few words in few minutes. I'd like to special thank David Tully for his assistance in getting these job guidelines and getting it done. And all of you, basically, pretty much, as, uh, Charlie knows me a little bit, from past days, a few year, years ago. As the Hillary Clinton book says, it takes a village, it takes a family to make a healthy kids. Healthy mind, encouragement, nourishment is the key to kids growing and carrying a torch forward. Those of you who are not familiar with Indian culture, the Indian Heritage Foundation has a four-thousand-year-old culture. They had plenty of time to make a mistake, refine, define, refine, and put in action. Lot of the yoga works, herb medicines, and lot of the positive role models the Indian community has produced and contribute to even our USA economy is something when you hear the totals, something like eight hundred thousand dollar doctors in America, eighty thousand business people in America, and very successful manager, general managers, assistants. And the reason they survive with the encouragement they get from four-thousand-year-old defined culture. And the culture mainly preaches, the service to humanity is service to divinity. So how do you live a humble life? Those of you who don't know me, for last thirty years, I've been going back and forth to India about three times a year. I didn't go for pleasure trip. I went to contribute something to their culture and bring something back to this culture. I have fifty thousand students that I sponsor that, there's orphanage kids, and we got some great politician out of it, great engineers, free pilots, couple hundred doctors. And I could not see, hey, why can we not have a, such a great thing in America? No matter. We had to go through a few hurdles, that's where it costs an expensive, discouraging encouragement to do a nice project like this. And today, I'm here to ask for your blessing, to get the project going, and let's produce some positive role model kids that other kids can feed off. And maybe the Hillary Clinton dream might come reality. Right, folks? That's all. We thank you for your time, opportunity to speak. It's been a long journey trying to get a use permit to change the land. I don't know how business people will survive all the cost, time bear, and expense that goes along with it. If I did not believe seriously in this cause and the results it produces, I probably would say adios. Let's go do into some other business where we can make a few bucks. But this is for the kids, and we want you to give us the best hand you can and your blessing, and give us a go green light. Thank you, folks. Appreciate it. I hope, in my humble words, I made a couple little sense. Thank you. Raj, he's another one, our board of directors of Heritage Foundation, he's going to say a few thank you words, uh...
Raj?
Uh, yes, good evening, folks. My name is Raj. I'm, uh, been involved with, uh, Mr. Patel for a number of years. I've seen him over many years, um, really give back a lot to the local community here. He's been in West Sacramento for many years, all the time that I've known him. Uh, certainly, conducted his, his business here in West Sacramento. He's raised his family and kids here in West Sacramento. And so I've known him for many, many years. And some of the causes that he supports, and he's certainly vouching, uh, in front of you today for support on some projects that he's, uh, he's doing, uh, for, for the local Indian community, the Heritage Foundation, uh, fully supportive of that. I just wanted to come over here today and kind of support, uh, lend my support, uh, to him and to show the council and the members here that, um, I think it's a very good cause and a very good, uh, reason for, uh, you know, moving, moving and integrating a lot of the Indian culture, the lot of the Indian, uh, uh, community, uh, as you folks know, it's a very large community, both here in West Sacramento as well as Sacramento as a general, and the surrounding, uh, and the surrounding areas. So, again, just want to, uh, show, show my support to Mr. Patel here, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Raj. Mr. Brady?
I'll let the commissioners, um, know that, um, you can see that Mr. Patel is, uh, quite passionate about, um, this, this venture and, um, has his whole heart into it. So we remain available for any questions you have.
Thank you. Are, are there any questions of Mr. Brady at this time? No? Okay, thank you. Um, I will then close the public hearing. Thank you for, uh, speaking and all of your comments. And I will move it to the commission for deliberation.
One question. Sandra, the only thing I didn't quite understand is you had that they could either put the property into one parcel or put a restriction on both parcels? Wouldn't you have to restrict both parcels instead of just one?
The restriction would be on the Houston parcel because it's providing most of the parking that's needed for the indoor recreation center on the West Capitol Avenue.
Well, which I understand that part, but if they were to sell the other and keep the parking lot, what would happen then? I mean... I mean, why wouldn't you restrict? I, I think the ideal way is just to put the two together. And I didn't understand why there would only be a restriction on one parcel and not both. Just didn't make sense to me.
Okay, we can do that. We can make the, change the condition to apply to both parcels.
Or put them together or put the restriction on both. Okay. Yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
Ms. Sandin, do you have any comments? No? I have a couple of comments. I just wanted to thank the, the city for working towards a solution on this property. First of all, it is important that we work together for quality projects. And I know it can be costly and rough sometimes. But in the interest of quality, sometimes it's a bumpy ride. So. Is actually, all of, all of my concerns were addressed. So if there's no other discussion, I will entertain a motion on this.
I'll move the recommended action with the addition to item six, which is the merging. Okay.
Did you want me to read that condition or it's?
That'd be great, yeah.
Okay. Prior to issuance of the building permit, the applicant must either merge the lots or record a deed restriction on 725 Houston Street and 3,000 West Capitol Avenue that prevents the sale of the properties until, A, sufficient replacement is provided for parking and the trash recycling enclosure, and B, a new eight-foot tall privacy wall and a 15-foot wide landscape buffer is provided between 725 Houston Street and 3,000 West Capitol Avenue. A note to this effect shall be provided on the building permit plans. Is that sufficient?
Okay, moved by Ms. Sandin.
Chair Lebig, um, excuse me. Can we please get confirmation from the applicant that that, they are expressly aware and agree to that revised condition?
Thanks. I had gotten a head nod, but that's probably not sufficient.
Yes, and Mr. Patel is agreeable to encumbering both parcels in that manner.
Thank you very much. Again, it was moved by Ms. Sandin, seconded by Commissioner Moore. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposition, nays. Hearing none. Passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, that, that is it for our agenda this evening. Moving on to.
Chair Lebig, I'm sorry, one more thing. We'd like to read the zoning appeal language for the item that was just approved.
Any interested party may appeal the decision of the planning commission in this matter with, to the city council by filing a written appeal with the city clerk within 15 days of tonight's action. The appeal must be accompanied by the appropriate filing fee.
Thank you. Is there any informal discussion this evening? Okay, it does appear that we will have a meeting on December, is it first?
Yes, I did want to let the planning commission know that you will be receiving your packets for December 1st tomorrow. And so we tried purposely to try to keep that meeting as light as possible. There's only two items, both of which we would expect to be relatively routine. And then we will be meeting on December 15th also. And then that will be our last meeting for the year. And then we will likely not meet again until mid, mid to late January 2012. So we, we hope everyone has a great Thanksgiving week next week.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded. Move seconded, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Thank you.